I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on February 12, 2018. The time is 8:12. Please join Councilmember Pizzillo in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I am Stu Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. We wish the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage others to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. We ask this in your name.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Pizzillo, for that enlightening prayer and the spirit that it was in. All right, Councilman Schiff will not be attending this meeting, so I'm going to need him a motion and a second to excuse him. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. All in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. All right, we're in the communication. We have one item tonight. Joe Schmidt, Long Range Planner, will introduce representatives from the city of Phoenix, and they will present an update on the Phoenix Goodyear Airport Master Plan. And gentlemen, thank you for your patience tonight. We greatly appreciate it.
Officially passed my bedtime now. Try not to hold that against you. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the representatives from the City of Phoenix Aviation Department. They're going to give you a brief overview of the master plan update that they've undertaken at the Phoenix Goodyear Airport. And hopefully, they'll give you a lot of good information on what's going on and what the plans are. In two weeks, we'll bring an item to you, which will be a request that you would recommend to the Phoenix City Council approval of the airport master plan update as presented. So you can anticipate seeing that in two weeks. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Randy Payne, who's a project manager for the Aviation Division, and let him introduce his staff member here.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Randy Payne. I'm a project manager with the City of Phoenix Aviation Department. And with me today is Brad Hagan, who's the new airport manager. He took over for Joe. And we're excited to give you a brief, I'm going to keep it very brief, update on the recently completed update for the Goodyear Airport Master Plan. For quick reference, up on the aerial for everybody, Goodyear is a single runway airport on about 700 acres at the southwest corner of Yuma and Litchfield Roads. The last master plan in 2007 was very aggressive, very aggressive, given the robust economy at that time, and called for the development of a second runway last year in 2017. So that did not happen. Following that plan, the national economy declined sharply. However, the airport continued to invest in basic maintenance at the airport, also in safety areas, including the shift of the runway to the south. We also invested in economic development. And following that year, in 2008, Lux Air Jet Centers actually opened at the airport in last December, two Decembers ago. They opened a brand-new building, and I'd like to report that that's actually pretty much full. So on the last slide, I mentioned the previous planned forecast and the reality of the housing boom and bust economy that we had. This graphic shows historic activity of the airport. That's in green. That's the actual activity of the airport. The previous planned forecast in orange, pretty much almost straight up, and then the current more realistic plan that we're concluding now in blue. Generally, we measure aircraft airport activity and operations, so flights, takeoff, or landing. So of particular significance in our current forecast is the 20-year level of operations. In the current plan, it allows us to actually defer serious planning of a second runway. So this deferment allows us, the airport, to really focus on near-term actions that can contribute to more economic development today, which helps actually drive those numbers. So a little bit of outreach. The process we take in updating the master plan generally follows a logical and rational planning sequence, with the FAA having authority over the review and approval of the forecast at the front of the process, as well as the final step, which is the Airport Layout Plan, or ALP, which is a set of maps of the airport. All these key activities up there are reviewed and vetted by both technical and planning policy stakeholders. Additionally, there were quite a few public outreach meetings, technical workshops, and public events that we attended, and of course, the public project website. With the focus on economic development in the master plan update, the recommended airport development plan provides both flexibility while maintaining a logical and efficient land use pattern. First, the yellow, can you guys see that? I'll use the mouse. Kind of show the yellow taxiway right there on the north side of the airport, provides a place setter for a future runway, potentially. But in the near term, showing this area as a future taxiway helps show potential developers how the north side of the airport could look for their development. Secondly, the black arrows on the map show potential areas for on- and off-airport access to the airport. It also helps provide more improvements. The remainder of the map shows the general land use designations for future development. This land use mix is intended to ensure job creation, diversity, and sustainability as it can adapt to different trends in the aviation business market. In closing, the master plan update had close to $700,000 in costs. Approximately $600,000 of that was from federal or state planning funds, so the City of Phoenix covered the rest. The master plan update recommends a variety of airfield maintenance and upgrade projects with a total five-year investment of about $23 million and a total 20-year CIP of $145 million. None of the projects result in any off-airport compatibility issues, as the current and future year noise contours generally stay within the airport boundaries. I want to thank the City of Goodyear for their support of the plan, as well as the positive partnership in general. We're very happy to answer any questions you might have, but before that, I'd like to ask Brad if he has any words.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just like to reaffirm how much we appreciate the support of the City of Goodyear, not only for the involvement in the master plan we've been going through last year, but for day-to-day operations. We've had the opportunity to work with Economic Development, Planning, Police, Fire, Emergency Management, Parks and Rec, and other departments, and all have been fantastic. We couldn't ask for a better partner. So we want to make sure we're a great partner for you as well. And if you ever have questions, concerns, comments, please feel free to reach out to us. We'd be happy to do everything we can for you, even if you just want to visit some of our business partners or take a tour, we're happy to do that for you as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that council likes to have response, so I really appreciate you coming forth. And so I'm going to turn it over to council, who would like, Councilman Lortano.
I want to say thank you for coming. You have been a great partner over all these years. My husband is a tenant of yours, because we have a Cessna that we hang there, and it is a beautiful airport. It's probably, I'd have to say, probably one of the best ones in the West Valley for general aviation and what you're adding, and I'm looking forward to what else you're adding, and hopefully we'll get some restaurants there and some other amenities and FBOs and stuff. So I want to thank you for all your hard work. It's a great airport.
Councilman Pizzillo.
Again, I just want to thank you for coming forward and doing the presentation. You've been an excellent partner for the city, and I know we'll have many more years in the future. When did you start as the manager over there? How long?
About 10 months ago. Joe retired in March, and I started in April of last year.
Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you. And also, too, if you'd like to do, I think Joe did them as well, maybe twice a year, if you'd like updates on businesses' activity, we'd be happy to do that as well, so.
Really would. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, we would like to know the landings and takeoff and how busy you are, and if there is a projected new pilot training company that might be coming in, if the airport's able to expand. All of that is of interest to us. And do you know when your master plan will be completed?
So we have the rough draft that's supposed to be to me by the end of the month, which would be posted to the website.
I know how master plans go.
So it's a little delayed from that point. And then from that, we're also supposed to get the airport layout plan, those set of maps that I'm going to be sending to the FAA. And I wish they would turn it around faster than they do.
Oh, they don't, yeah.
But that could take a few months to six for that piece of it. But the actual document itself should be online the next month and a half for sure, if not, you know, a couple of weeks.
Well, we appreciate you coming and giving us your update, and we're really excited, and we appreciate the City of Phoenix wanting to invest more in your airport and our airport. And we look forward to the completion of it.
Councilman Osborne.
You know, we all have had to have patience over these last few years, haven't we? And seen a lot of change, and you have too. And, you know, it's still exciting, because we still see a future that's going to be really awesome. And it's just, you know, we took a little step back for a short time, but things are on the move, and it was exciting to see the new hangar being built the last few years. So, you know, I appreciate you coming and giving us an update, and the plan that continues on is something that we'll all be excited about 20 years from now. Thank you very much.
Yeah, can't add too much more, but thank you so much, and welcome to the airport. And also, yeah, it's a great entity and a great resource and a great economic driver for our community and also the Phoenix and the region. So looking forward to working with you for much longer. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the partnership. And please take that back to the mayor and council. This is an unusual relationship. I don't know how many cities are privy to have relationships such as we have, but you've done so well that you allow us to accomplish what we need to there and to help out, and it's such a good teamwork. And so again, thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation tonight. And you have to be patient with these master plans, you know that. All right, have a good evening. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any?
No, Mayor.
No, okay. Thank you. Then we'll go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Item 6.1 to 6.3 by title only, please?
Approval of Minutes, 6.2, Series 12 Liquor License for Marco's Pizza, 6.3, Map of Dedication for Hillside Drive and Cindero Drive.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item? All right, let's go forth. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right, let's go on to business. I'd like to remind council, refrain from questions. It'll staff presentation is to complete, the motion on the table. The first item on business is to consider approving the reappointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Katie Wilken, Planning Manager, will present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The seven-member Planning Commission heard over 40 cases in 2017. They're a very active group. Three members' terms expire this month. All three are eligible to serve another term. The council Subcommittee for Appointing Boards and Committee Members met to review all the applications we received for the three seats and have recommended that the City Council reappoint the three Planning Commissioners, Jason Kish, Michelle Walters, and Walt Steiner. They will serve a term to 2021. Jason Kish has held in with us, and he is here to give his oath of office if appointed.
All right. Thank you. And then we're just going to go out with one, two, and three. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the reappointment of Jason Kish to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill a term expiring February 12, 2021, or until his successor is appointed or qualified? We'll go down all three, and then we'll do a motion on all of them together, okay? Number two, reappoint Walter Steiner to Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill the term expiring February 12, 2021, or until his successor is appointed and qualified. And three, reappoint Michelle Walters to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill the term expiring February 12, 2021, or until her successor is appointed and qualified. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano and a second from Osborne, sorry me, motion from Councilman Osborne and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So now, would Mr. Kirsch come forward? To be sworn in by city clerk. And before we do this, would you please extend my apologies to the other two candidates? But I guess they kind of learned a little bit more about council tonight after hearing all of that, so thank you so much.
May I state your name?
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of Commissioner according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm.
Mr. Kish, thank you again for your patience tonight. And before you go, anybody want to give him a little attaboy, because I'm telling you, this was a long evening for him to sit there, so.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you, thank you.
Well, we appreciate your service, believe me.
Thank you.
You're very valuable. Thank you. All right, the next item on business, to consider adopting Resolution Number 2018-1856 for the donation of a surplus brush truck. Tom Cole, Deputy Fire Chief, and Charles Schneider, Fleet Superintendent, will be presenting. Hello, gentlemen.
Mayor and Council. The action before you is to adopt a resolution that'll approve an agreement for us to donate our surplus 2001 brush truck, Chevrolet brush truck, to the Gila Bend Fire Department. Gila Bend Fire Department is a volunteer fire department, and they thrive on this type of donation. It's what keeps the wheels turning down there. We have a history of running calls with them, especially along Highway 238 in the Mobile area. And although those responses are not frequent, they are, when they do occur, they are often very traumatic, you know, large-impact incidents. We also run brush fires down there with them, so that's another activity. We do, the aid from Gila Bend Fire Department is valuable to us, but we are hampered by the fact that they do have older equipment, and they also have, they're not part of our automatic aid system, so we lack a direct communication with them. So this truck is 17 years old. It's a Type 6 brush truck. It has been brushed 182 down in Stray Mountain Ranch, and that truck has been replaced with a modern four-seat Ford F-450 brush, I'm sorry, 550 brush truck. This truck no longer meets our standards. It only seats two members of our fire department, and that's a smaller crew than we would normally send out on a deployment. It does include the bed, the fire pump, and a single-band fire radio. So this would enable direct communications with the Gila Bend firefighters, and that's definitely an enhancement. Again, we respond with them along 238, a great history of working together. The value of this truck, if we were to, and Charles can speak a little bit more about the value, so I'm going to let him do that, but staff is recommending that you pass the resolution to allow us to enter into this agreement to donate the truck.
Charles, you want?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The value, it really can fluctuate depending on which way we go. If we went the auction route, it'd be about $4,500. If we brokered it, maybe somewhere around $13,000, $14,000.
Thank you.
Again, staff's recommendation is to pass the resolution. We feel the value that'll be brought by this equipment serving the citizens of Goodyear and South Goodyear outweighs the cash value to the general fund. I'll be having to answer your questions on the matter.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would any of the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk then please read Resolution-Ordinance Number 2018-1856 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1856 approving the execution of an agreement providing for the donation of the city's surplus 2001 Chevrolet brush truck to the Gila Bend Fire Department for use in emergency response.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and then a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm delighted that we can do this for Mayor Tommy Lee Sykes, who's a dear friend of mine, and he will be thrilled to have this truck, because to him, it's like brand-new. And so thank you for working with them and seeing the need that we are able to help them with.
I want to say thank you. I agree with Vice Mayor that they're going to be thrilled with this. And I don't know how many of you've gone through and driven through Gila Bend, and since I've been on the council since 2005, I want you to know that city has struggled but has improved. And you see that every day as you go through, and I'm so proud of their council and the mayor of what they have done with what resources they have. And so this is, to me, just ideal, that we're now really going into a partnership with them, because, you know, we infringed upon them, asking them to help us with Mobile. And so I just think this is a great extending gift to them from the City of Goodyear. So tell them congratulations, and it comes with a handshake and a smile, and we're so pleased to do it. So thank you for the presentation.
Be sure and put a bow on the top.
Just a red bow on top, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, then let's vote on it. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thanks so much.
Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor, I'd just like to pass on apologies from Fire Chief Fred Baldridge. He does have another job as a firefighter, full-time, and he's on shift, but they have just their gratitude. They are so grateful for your support in this matter, so.
Well, you just extend what we said tonight, because that was sincere from all of our hearts, okay?
My pleasure, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item, 7.3, is to consider adopting Resolution 2018-1857, adopting the rates and the fees for small wireless facilities in the city's right-of-way. Alan Claypool, Chief Information Office, presenting. Clay?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for my voice. I picked up a computer virus from an email that got sent in, so it'll be a little rough as we go through this. Purpose of today's agenda item is to look at putting in the fees for the small wireless facilities. If you remember, those are not the big things, the macro sites, these are the small, little guys. On January 8th, I brought before council the standard terms and conditions and the license for your consideration, and that was approved and put into place. This all came from House Bill 2365, and this was a collaborative effort amongst the Valley area, so the things that you're seeing are the same things throughout the Valley. What these are going to do is they're going to dramatically improve data connectivity, not so much voice, just because of the bandwidth that these things hold, but it'll improve the data as they start putting these around the area. They'll probably start more in densely concentrated housing areas and businesses, and then they'll start moving it out as 5G comes to fruition. We set standard fees in line with the state law, the $750 is an example of that, and you'll see the others in the later slide. Again, here are some examples of what they might use when they start putting these in place. These are in place in the Valley, if you drive around. I've not seen one in Goodyear yet, but they are in the Valley already. For your consideration, this is what we propose. Again, this is in line with the state law. You can see on the right-hand side the proposed new rate of $50 through various different structures, and then the 750 is lower than what we currently have in our application fee for the dry utilities. So there is a change there for you to consider. That was the end of my presentation, short and sweet.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
All right, are there any?
No, Mayor.
Speaker cards? Thank you very much. All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1857 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1857, adopting the rates and fees for the installation, operation, and maintenance of small wireless facilities in the city's rights-of-way, providing an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Lort... Osborne, and a second by Councilman... Councilman Hampton. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Okay, so open council discussion? You can say something about me calling you that. I'll accept that tonight. I won't get mad. Any other discussion? All right, I think we're ready to vote on it. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, on 7.4, on business, to consider approving the bulk water agreements with Adaman Mutual Water Company and Adaman Irrigation Water Delivery District Number 36. Barbara's backup, Chappelle, interim Public Works Director, to present.
Good evening, again. Over the years, the city has developed diverse water strategies that include partnerships with neighboring utilities, and Adaman is one of those such agreements. Our current agreement is with the Adaman Mutual Water Company and has been in place since 2007. It allows for the exclusive use of two wells and up to 4.4 million gallons per day of water from their service area. This amount coincides with what the State Department of Water Resources recognizes in our assured water supply designation. The agreement before you tonight, there's several. The first one is amended and restated agreement that allows for the exclusive use of a third well, which will give us the capacity to withdraw up to 4.4 million gallons per day. It also adds the Adaman Irrigation District as a party to the agreement, and this is important, because they are the owner of record for much of their infrastructure. The operations and maintenance agreement that's before you memorializes the current operation that we are practicing now. The city owns the equipment on the well sites, and we do the operations. The agreement will also allow us to convey the ownership of the land. It's currently owned by the city. It needs to be conveyed back to Adaman, and it gives us the easements to allow us to get onto those well sites. So it just really memorializes the way we're currently operating. And then the final agreement is an amendment to the amended and restated agreement that allows for a bulk or a lump sum payment for the exclusive use of the third well. In the agreement, we've negotiated a cost for the exclusive lease of that well for 100 years, and what this final amendment does is it allows us, after five years of monthly payment, allows us to make a lump sum payment and not pay after that.
And that's it. Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, council, we're going to take these in three items, okay? So number one, can I have a motion and a second to approve the amended and restated bulk water delivery agreement between the City of Goodyear, Adaman Mutual Water Company, and Adaman Irrigation Water Delivery District Number 36. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a general question. This is typically what we've had in place in the past, right?
Correct.
So this is in case we, there's a water issue, we have a way of, it's a Plan B. Is that what that is, or?
We actually already use Adaman's well one and two, and it's part of our water resource portfolio. The 4.4 million gallons per day is included in our The 4.4 million gallons per day is included in our designation and recognized by the state. So, this third well will allow us the capacity to withdraw the water that we're allowed to use.
Thank you.
Okay, all set? Or let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Going to number two. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the new well facilities operations and maintenance agreement between the city of Goodyear, Adaman Mutual Water Company, and Adaman Irrigation Water Delivery District Number Thirty-Six? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're down to number three. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment number one to the amended and restated bulk water agreement between the city of Goodyear, Adaman Mutual Water Company, and Adaman Irrigation Water Delivery District Number Thirty-Six? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, I'm going to guess on this one. I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne and a second from, that's what I heard you too, and a second from Vice Mayor. Open for council discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Could you, what is the amount of the payoff for the total amount?
The original amount is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We'll be making a down payment of a hundred thousand and then monthly payments for five years, and then a lump sum at the end, which is roughly four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand will be due.
But seven-fifty is for the full, for the third well?
Yep, that's the cost of drilling the well, which is already there, and the land.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The next item is seven point five, on business to consider adopting Resolution 2018-1855 for the development agreement for Lucero. Steve Cento, Plan Review Manager, presenting. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, I'm the Engineering Plan Review Manager, and I'm here to present this minor development agreement.
You're going to have to get closer to that microphone than that.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
That's so much better, thank you.
Let's see if I can get this thing in focus. Okay, can you see that okay?
Yeah.
As you may recall from previous presentations by others, Lucero has been previously called Australian Mountain Ranch Community Eleven and is located generally between Cotton Lane and Australia Parkway, north of the Roundabout. We're very excited to bring forward this tonight because it's the final step to really kicking off the construction of the community, which will ultimately include approximately fourteen parcels totaling twelve-hundred-and-fifty homes and the Casa Lucero Welcome Center. And the agreement addresses four development-related issues: ownership and maintenance responsibility for drainage facilities, responsibility to the construction of two traffic signals, use of building permit holds to secure the construction of local infrastructure, and the ability for the owner to undertake some grading at an at-risk basis. The staff report provides a comprehensive explanation of the DA terms, but I will briefly touch on the components. The first of these, the drainage facility, drainage facilities are to be maintained by the property owner. Generally, a final plat will provide for the dedication of the drainage facilities that the HOA is to maintain. In this case, however, the majority of the drainage facilities that support the community are located outside the boundaries of a final plat for Lucero. This DA is the mechanism by which we bind the property owner and, in the future, the HOA to the overall drainage obligation for Lucero. Second term, the two traffic signals along Australia Parkway are to be installed in the future as part of Lucero development. The DA solidifies the timing of when the signals are to be designed and constructed, and it allows us to simplify the various requirements into one document. The third term deals with building permit holds. These are allowed to be used as a form of financial assurance to ensure the completion of the local infrastructure improvements. Off-site improvements will continue to be secured by performance bond or ESCO agreements. This method of assurance has been utilized by a number of projects in the past eighteen months within Goodyear. And the final term is grading sequencing. It's normal and customary for all plan sets for a project to be approved prior to issuing any permits, any construction permits. In this case, and due to the size and complexity of Lucero, it is reasonable to allow for grading permits on specific portions of the master development while other ancillary plan sets are being finalized. Since our guidelines do not allow for this distinction, this DA gives us the flexibility to issue the grading permits in advance. It should be noted that the remaining infrastructure plans are very close to being approved at this time. In closing, I would like to state that this DA was initially submitted to the city in October of 2016. Within the last few months, I understand that council has directed staff to assess the required fees for the DA. We did not retroactively charge the fee for this development. With that, I would like to extend an appreciation to the city's attorney's office, specifically Sarah Chilton, as they helped us work through the deal points of the agreement to protect the city's interest while also providing flexibility for the development of a complex project. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1855 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1855, approving a development agreement regarding the construction of certain infrastructure improvements within Lucero and future maintenance responsibility for certain infrastructure, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of the resolution and development agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Laura Tonno and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you, Steve. I thought that was really a great breakdown of the deal points and a background, so appreciate that.
Councilman, Vice Mayor?
I just have a question. Is, how far north of the Roundabout is this parcel? Is it right there at it?
Mayor or council member? It is, if, let me see if I can shift this up. There we go. So, right here is the Roundabout, and then the first phase is further north, but ultimately it'll stretch all the way down just northeast of the Roundabout.
It's not where I thought it was, so thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say thank you and for bringing this forward. It's going to get the density we need up there, so I'm glad that they brought this forward. Can we get a copy of this map? Because this is a great map that shows where there's going to be houses, where there's going to be open space. Is there a way we can get a copy of this?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Any other? All right. Council discussion is finished. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh.
All right. Next item, seven point six, is to consider approving the expenditure of funds for the Goodyear Water Reclamation Expansion Project and site improvements. Tim Burkine, Senior Manager, and Barbara Chappell, for your, oh, this is a busy evening for you. You've worked, you've made your money tonight. Interim Public Works Director, to present.
Hello. We're here this evening to discuss the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility. Put up here a map on the area showing the location of the facility, south of MC-85, just off of Australia Parkway, and is the future location of our water, our larger water campus. So, the future water treatment facility will be located just west over here in this field, so you can have an idea. Water reclamation facilities are required to be, the expansion of them is required when they reach eighty percent, average day is eighty percent of its permitted capacity. When they reach ninety percent of its permitted capacity, they need to be in construction, and our facility has been consistently treating in the ninety percentile. We had a recent audit with Maricopa County Environmental Services, and they acknowledged that we really need to get this plant into construction. It originally began in 2013, and for reasons unknown to the current team, it was segmented, and three individual smaller projects have been completed. The current team, Tim and I, took over in 2016, and the third project was underway. That was the headwork screens and the remediation of an old shooting range on the site. At that time, we noticed that the overall project was under budget and under scoped. We have some examples. There was a four-million-gallon-per-day to six-million-gallon-per-day expansion designed for the city of Peoria in 2008, and that was a fifteen-million-dollar project. There was another project recently in Glendale for a similar expansion, a four-to-six MGD, and that price was twenty million dollars. We also had some additional improvements identified in the integrated water master plan back in 2016. Those items were placed in the CIP and were part of the five-year rate-funded CIP projects. The team also identified some deficiencies on the site with the security and some improvements necessary to become compliant with our homeland security rules. There's a laboratory on the location where we have staff that work on a daily basis that has a huge rodent infestation. We have a maintenance shop that's taking place in an old tin building that used to be the blower building for the facility. And we just really found the need to overall, to improve the overall aesthetics of the site. We combined those projects with the expansion project to see some efficiencies and complete the project in one construction phase. In May of 2017, we had contracted with a construction manager at risk, Felix Construction, who's gone out and gotten us bids, and now we have a real cost for the project. So, in order to complete all of these projects in one construction site, one job, we're asking for an additional five-point-three million dollars with our existing, to go with our existing budget. Three-and-a-half million would be from impact fees because they're related to the expansion and one-point-eight from rates for the improvements to the site. And so, we're asking for your approval and the expenditure of the fourteen-point-five for the overall project. Tim is also here this evening, and he will be going over some of the delivery components.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council. This project, the Package 8B expansion, is really the capstone project to many of the improvements that have been already completed over the last few years. It is also a culmination of several of the operational projects that need to happen that are not necessarily part of the expansion but are necessary for the plant to function well. As Barb mentioned, we contracted with Felix Construction as a construction manager at risk so we could gain the best value of their experience in building this sort, these sorts of facilities and subcontracting the work. Just to give you some idea without going into a lot of detail, what you see in front of you are some of the elements, the final stages of this overall project. We're installing a new influent pump station, a new reclaimed water system, chlorine contact basin, improvements to the sedimentation basin, return activated sledge, aeration basin, sledge handling, installing a new centrifuge. Additional site improvements that are site-wide. We're in desperate need of some drainage improvements. We've got, you know, ponding water out there every time it rains. Much of the plant itself is not paved, and you can imagine how difficult that must be for the operators trying to get around to maintain these facilities. So, we're going to install some paving. We're in desperate need of some fencing and security improvements. As Barb mentioned, we do have some responsibilities to secure our site. Lab improvements, shop improvements, and installing the non-podable water system. Without going into a lot of detail, that's kind of the gist of it. In working with the engineer and the C Mar and understanding what exactly is needed, I can tell you, standing here, that these are all necessary and required functions. That there are, there's no luxuries here. It's what the plant operators need for today and for the future. The completion of the construction, startup and commission should be completed by next spring. So, with that, I think we would be happy to take any questions you have.
Thanks very much. Very direct and very honest. Thank you, Tim. All right. Can I have a motion and approve the expenditures, expenditure of funds in the amount of fourteen million, five-hundred-and-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four for the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility, Package Number Eight-B, four-point-to-six-point-MGD Expansion Project, required, and required budget transfers to combine the projects and add five-point-three million in wastewater bond funds? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, a second from Councilman Hampton. Okay, open for council discussion. I'll look left here. I'm going to go down.
So, maybe I missed it. So, was this, this is change order, but was this already in our approved budget for this year?
In the microphone.
Is this already approved in the CIP for this year?
Council, pardon me.
Councilman Hampton, I do the same thing.
I know, I know.
It is approved in the budget. There are several projects approved in the budget. This Package 8B combines them together for one delivery package.
Okay. I thought, sorry, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. I think it'll be a good, definitely a needed, a needed expansion to keep our system operating in the way that we need it to for our residents as we keep growing. So, I think we'll see more of these as we, infrastructure projects, as we keep growing and growing and try to get more modern and to meet the needs of our residents. So, thank you.
Senator Osborne?
I appreciate the presentation, and obviously, everything that you said are needed entities and changes. I guess where I got a little concerned was the five-point-two-million-dollar change. And going from 2013, correct, when it was first originally scoped out to today, that's a, that's a big increase. And so, what I wasn't quite sure of was a majority of that increase because there were added entities that were not planned for previously, or is it because of a change in pricing, or is it a combination of the two? How would you?
Councilwoman Osborne, Mayor and council, there's two answers to that question. The solids handling, sludge handling facilities came later. They were part of the IDWMP. Those facilities were identified later. They're part of this. And the other part is that the necessary expansion was underfunded from the beginning.
Underfunded, meaning, okay. Back to the reason we need.
Meaning that in 2013, I don't think the price of all of the pumps and facilities and structures and concrete and rebar and all the things that went into this wasn't scoped.
I see. Well, and I think this goes back to what we discussed the last couple of weeks of, you know, having all these projects that are within our CIP looked at to make sure we don't get behind like this again in the future. Thank you.
I'll go to this side. Councilman Pizzillo?
It's my understanding you're going to be selling at some point in time five-point-three million dollars' worth of wastewater bonds, correct? And with the study in place, do you have any idea at this point, and I'm looking at the finance director, I assume when they get sold, you're going to have to figure out what that debt service is and how much that may impact the, our current wastewater taxpayers? Has it gotten that far?
Yeah. So, when we did the last rate study, we had in there, I believe it was seven-point-five capacity for bonding, and we have not used that. So, this five-point-three is within the existing rate plan.
So, okay, so it's not going to, okay, well, we're planning on raising the rates to a point this isn't going to affect it. My only concern, and again, and we're going to have to look at our CIP moving forward in this next couple of years, is, Councilman Osborne's concern is, if we have too many of these, there won't be enough bonds to sell. So, we've got to be careful as we start scoping these out, especially as we move forward in this budget and timelines, and make sure we have the money in place to do these jobs. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, we're coming down to the end of it. Does council have any comments, combination reports on your current events? All right, Councilman Hampton?
I was just going to talk about the current event, just about the, about the great event this weekend.
Go ahead.
Saturday night. So, yeah, I thought it was good, Tale Two Cities rebranded, culture pop. I thought a lot more people were there versus the parade. I got a lot of good feedback from people. A great event, a lot of things for people to see. People are, I think, excited to be there. I think the family events, having the kids' things that were free was a great, people were surprised and pleasantly surprised when they found out that some of those were free. I wrote down this slide, slide at least three times, so I think it was a great event, and-
Talking about the swearing in since you-
Yeah, and the swearing in.
I'd like you to talk-
Yeah, swearing in was great, too. Mary did a great job with her speech, too, and just, it's, it's pretty heartwarming and pretty exciting to see fifty-plus new Americans get sworn in and become citizens of, of our great country. So, great teaching moment for my kids, too, so it was good for them to see that process as well. But, yeah, everybody involved, I thought it was, it's just a, it's just a great, great event to witness at least, at least once, so. So, yeah, great, great event, a lot of, a lot of cheering, a lot of tears, I think, from people, and it was, it was a good, a good, a real good event and a good part of the culture pop event, too. So, so thank you to Parks and Recs and the city staff that put all the time in, the Youth Commission that helped support it as well, and, yeah, good event overall. I think I'd like to repeat it, so thank you.
Councilwoman Lortano?
And I think just about everybody up here attended the council on a corner up in Oasis Bagels up in Estrella, and we had a really good turnout and think, I know, we had the chiefs out there, we had everybody out there, police, fire. The mayor was there, and I just want to reiterate, so city staff knows what a great job you guys did with Tale Two Cities, the cultural pop fest. Now, that was fun, and the mayor is going to join the circus now.
I saw her on that thing, yeah.
Anybody else? Councilman Bazillo?
Yeah, I thought the culture pop was a, was a great event. The only one suggestion I'd make kind of going forward is lighting. I noticed at certain areas within the event, you know, maybe a couple more of those big floodlight type of things you may just want to add, but the event was great. It had a little bit of everybody there, and I truly enjoyed it, so. But again, that's the only thing I would add, is maybe just a couple more of those big floodlights.
I have to agree with you. That was one of my comments.
For the lighting, and that's it. Other than that, there was a lot of people, they enjoyed it, and I think you hit on a success theme there. I really do, so.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, well, let us go on with it. Does the city manager have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, excuse me, I have one item. City offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th, an observance of Presidents' Day, and emergency fire and police services will operate as normal, will not be affected by the closure, although there will be no trash, recycling or bulk picked up that day, and sanitation service schedules resume to the day after your normal pickup. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any staff summary or follow-up action required?
I do not have any.
Okay. Does council have any inquiries to staff? Yes, Councilman Campbell. Vice Mayor?
Maybe next week y'all can give us a count of how many folks attended Saturday night, unless you know now?
I have the number. It's over four thousand.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Um, yeah. All right, just a moment, I'm just checking where I want to put this. Okay, I'm going to interject this. So, you know that we've had an interim city manager, and I, his time is just about up, so, so it's your last meeting as the interim, and I just want to take a moment to thank you and Winnet for their leadership during this transition. This was a very difficult for both of you, and you came together and you did it so well. Dan, you have done an exceptional job in the role of interim, and I have, I have valued your input, input over the last several weeks, and I think I talked to you about it this morning, how well I thought you were able to articulate yourself to the council and their needs, and I've, I've helped from the entire council, very positive reinforcement of a good job that you've done. And so, the city is in Goodyear, and we're lucky to have you and Winnet as part of our management team, and I think this period of time just proved that. It just proved what team play means and how when somebody leaves doesn't mean the city falls apart. It means we continue, we all with a positive. And I think the other thing is you all as a council helped on that, so we were really working as a team effort. So, I want to thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now, there, there has been an inquiry for future agendas, and I need to discuss this with you tonight. There was a, there was a current, currently, the council, there was a councilperson or council members that wanted to retreat scheduled for March 23rd, and so, I know you put that on the agenda. We, as a mayor, when I heard that, I said, "Well, I'm on an agenda." And at the same time, I was a little bit concerned because we had made an agreement that the citizen satisfaction survey would be coming out before we had another retreat, so we could be able to actually know what the public wanted instead of after the fact. So, and we don't receive those results until around the May or June timeframe, and these would be reviewed in the strategic plan in September and October. So, I sort of want to talk about this tonight because I, I do not believe this is the opportune time for this to happen with a new city manager coming on. I, I just don't think there's an urgency to have a retreat at this time. That means a third-party facilitator, means cost, means bringing us together, and there's short time to find out what we're going to discuss, and this is an expensive time. It's, it's your time, and it's the facilitators', and that's our money. So, I, I'm, I'm bringing it out to you tonight with, want to find out a consensus on this, so I'm going to push this out to the councils. Councilman Lortano?
I, I know, I was one of the ones that wanted to retreat, and I still want to retreat, but I just don't think March 23rd is probably the day for the retreat. I know we were picking a day, and I know I was happy to pick a day to at least get it on there to clear my schedule because it's really hard sometimes for me to schedule if it goes on too quickly, but we're going to be gone, most of us are going to be at the League of Cities for a week in March. We have a new city manager that hasn't started, I haven't, I haven't even met with her yet, done my first meeting with her yet. Oh, yeah, I'm going to hurt you over there. And so, I, I don't think that's fair. She doesn't really have a grasp on the staff and what the issues are with them and what, you know, is going through their thoughts, and we just finished the strategic plan pretty much today, so I don't want it to get lost. That's the only, my only concern is I would like to be able to set a really good agenda, whether we do it in a workshop session or we do it and set our thoughts to the city manager or to somebody, you know, in the manager's office, however it needs to be done, that we don't get the thoughts lost and it doesn't get pushed till Christmas because then, again, we're rushed and everything, and Christmas is a horrible time to have it. So, I think maybe we look at schedules and we try to firm up a date that's realistic. You know, in court, we call it a realistic trial date, you know? This one's just not realistic, but I don't want to lose it. I think it's really important we get those ideas out.
So, essentially, you're pulling your-
I, I would like to move it. I'm not pulling the support for the retreat.
No, you want the treat, but you're pulling off-
Yeah, and I think that's what my original support was, the retreat, and then they sent out different dates that we were available by email, so maybe we just move it on to a more realistic time to get everyone ready, and just not over Christmas and not over the summer.
No, we've had enough working on Christmas time.
Yeah.
Last year. Councilman Osborne?
Well, and I can thoroughly agree with that. I mean, the fact that we had the full staff and council retreat and with the, you know, the strategic plan in mind, then we had, unfortunately, you weren't here, Mayor, when we were really discussing budget items, and, but that, a lot of information came out of that discussion also, and still missing the key component of our talks is the citizens' input, and having that survey, I think, would be, would be really important. So, I, I can see, we always want to have that, but you're right, this isn't the right time for it.
I'm down to this side.
You know, I, I think we got a lot done on the budget at that last meeting last Monday. Got a lot of ideas out there, but if you, if you don't have an agenda and you don't have the citizen satisfaction survey, so you don't know exactly what the citizens think we're doing right or doing wrong, I think you're kind of incomplete having a retreat without that. Now, I can see, and since, what did you say, the citizen satisfaction survey comes out?
May, was it May? Results, results received around May and June timeframe.
Okay. Well, if we have one, it'll be planning for the following one because that budget will be done, so I, I think it wouldn't hurt probably to take the information that you get from your citizens and from that, build probably for the, for the future on that. It would have been nice to have it probably, but we, we won't, so, yeah, to me, there's no value in having it without that citizen satisfaction survey, because to me, they drive the process once we figure out what, what they would like to see improve or not improve with us, so.
All right. Molly?
Well, we generally don't have a budget retreat, so this was new this year, the way we did it. So, that, even before we had that budget retreat, I was asking for a council retreat because you had a council retreat last year when I could not be there. You could not reschedule it, but this year, they did a budget retreat. I don't know, it's just a mess. So, just, I would like to have a schedule sometime between, or have it scheduled between now and December 31.
Yeah, part of the problem is, too, is the council. I mean, that, that's what delays it, trying to figure, and I, I don't mean to cut you off, absolutely, I understand your request, but it is very difficult. We have, if you look in our council, the working council people, Councilman Hampton, Councilwoman Lortano, Councilman Osborne, they, but the two of us, so they really have a really, we're, we're more free to be pliable normally. You do have your travel with the League of Cities, but, so it does make it very difficult for staff to locate a timeframe. The biggest part of this is there wasn't any objective to it, there wasn't any content to it, and there's, we just cannot give things if we're not, if staff is not prepared because we don't give them the information. So, I know, you talked to Bill, Roy?
Yeah, yes, he's expressing the same sentiments.
Okay.
Yep.
A couple meetings.
So, why don't you just tie it in October, right there? Tell them we'll start looking for a date in October.
Sure. Based on what I'm hearing, if it would be okay, I think we could propose some dates in the normal cycle for the retreat in the fall, which is typically the end of October, I believe, depending on availability, but you're right, March 23rd was the only time between the time that that retreat had been requested and the four-month window that it was asked to be scheduled within. That was the only day that worked in that whole period of time.
Can we schedule it on a Saturday, please, and then those that were possibly can be home?
I would like that.
Yeah, I think Saturday, I think a Saturday-
I think a Saturday and a Sunday would be great.
So, all day Saturday?
Yeah, it does work on Saturdays because most people can, Joe's going to have to be the only one, but we're going to have him get a substitute. All day long? Half a day? Okay. Well, that gives us one-
What we've previously done is a half-day Friday afternoon and then a half-day Saturday.
Yeah, okay. They're looking you out, we can do that. Joe, can you do that?
I can figure that out.
A half-day? Okay, all right.
I, I can be really flexible as long as I have enough time. That's why I was able to keep March 23rd open, so if you're planning in October, I can be pretty flexible.
Great. We'll get, we'll look at calendars and get that scheduled.
All right, great. Besides that inquiry, does anybody else have anything for a future agenda item? All right. The next meeting will be a CFD workshop session and a regular meeting on February 26, 2018 at 4:30. And Council, I want to compliment you on your conversation tonight. I think you gave a lot of information to staff. I think they have someplace to go now with lots of, lots of things to work on. So, with that, this meeting is being adjourned.